Eight three, eight, uh, eight one three.
Yep.
Eight one three, eight nine ten.
This is perfect.
We can say that. We don't have to say those.
Yeah, there's a reason why. I'm trying to remember the conversation on these ones that I asked. This, 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 this.
This, I don't think we have to say, um, but we can say. So, so I would say browse this.
Yeah.
Because I came up with this based on this, which is not to say I'm right or I, you know, didn't miss anything.
But look at that.
There will be a maximum.
Well, not that we have to have a minimum and a maximum, but we can't, we say.
We can't be under seven fifty, but we can cabinet it.
We kept the minimums down.
We can't, now, now.
The maximum was five.
My, my minimum's seven fifty.
Right.
The present is.
Okay, I guess it's the opposite.
Yeah.
Correct?
Thank you. They go on back to numbers. So sometimes it is weak late in the winter. Yeah.
Did you get, um, did you get this stuff?
I, yes, everybody has it.
This stuff on this side.
Is next year or don't worry about it? Thank you. Awesome. Thank you. It's chilly. Don't heat up. It's chilly. Okay, let's open up the planning board meeting of December with continuance of Mr. Gagnon's subdivision plan. Mr. Berry.
Good evening. Chris Berry with Berry's Surveying Engineering. Um, it's been a long week. It's already Tuesday, so I apologize. I'm not as professionally dressed as I normally am. Uh, I'll roll one full-size out and then some house scale. So, um, just to refresh the board's minds, um, this is a re-subdivision, a subdivision that, um, took place about eighteen months ago in Clementwood. Um, frankly, the need of the application is that we are reducing one of the units or one unit of the total subdivision. We're reducing the amount of roadway that's being installed, and we're converting the project from a duplex style development to a single-family kind of a estate development. Um, we met last, um, last meeting, which was about two weeks at this point. Um, and at that time, we had a planner's review done by your planner, John Krebs, and a civil engineer, our peer review, done by Jay Stevens. Uh, since then, uh, we've taken care of the comments that were provided to us at that time, and, uh, we were able to take care of a few of the discussion items that took place at this table as part of that public hearing. Um, really, the bulk of the conversation that came out of last month's meeting, uh, revolved around a couple of John's comments, as well as a couple of Jay's comments, one of Jay's comments in particular, and that was that we were proposing a well on Unit Five, LCA Five, that went into the town's right-of-way, or proposed town's right-of-way. Uh, he took pretty good exception to that, and so I agreed that, um, I could redesign the site slightly to, to rectify that. Um, I think he'll note in his, uh, final peer review for tonight, uh, that he takes no exception to the, to the plans that he provided, and that we had satisfactorily taken care of all of the, uh, all of the engineering comments that he had provided us. Um, so as of now, there's no outstanding engineering concern. Mr. Krebs, uh, I apologize. Maybe I should have reached out to John. Um, what, for small technical items like this, I think we all know what it takes to prepare an actual set of plans, and so with Jay, everything, Jay requested everything in PDF. I supplied everything to John in PDF also. Um, apparently, John was expecting a full set of plans. So you'll notice that John's technical review tonight is actually just a recap of last month's review. I had provided him a, uh, a digital copy of the plans and a written formal response. Um, and so what I'd like to do with the board is just take his, what he's calling, conditions of approval, um, go through my responses, and then we can sort of mutually check off what applies to be a condition of approval and what might not apply anywhere, if the board's okay with it. Um, so.
Let's do that.
Um, other than that, I think the plans are in order for, uh, finalization. Um, unless the board has any other questions, or you feel there's other outstanding items that you weren't able to address with your, uh, with your consultants.
I, I just want to clarify, with Jay Stevens' review, um, it's talking about the well radius.
Yes.
You're talking about the well radius going into the town right-of-way. This references lot four. Um, so, so is there, is it still extending into the?
No.
Yeah.
No. So because these aren't actual lots, and this is a little confusing. And these are limited comment areas. Uh, let's see, where's it going? It shows it. So, uh, let's see, four is here. And so Jay's comment is that, in a normal subdivision where there are lots, the subdivision regulations do not allow for well radiuses without easement to go onto other lots, and that's pursuant to, um, states actually also. In this particular instance, because these are limited comment areas, um, the state allows what we're proposing to do. My comment in, in his, to his original comment was that you can't take a well like this and hand it onto somebody else's property because you're infringing on their rights. And so that's, I guess that's the only difference between what Jay talks about and what I talked about. But now all of the well radiuses stay on our property or on our open space and are not inside the road.
Okay. That was to Jay Stevens' comment, and then we're going to go into, um, John's technical memorandum.
Did, um, I emailed, I had CC'd, um, either one or both of you, um, my responses to John. Did, um, did the board get them or not?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I don't recall it. If you wouldn't mind taking the time anyway.
Yeah, no, no problem.
We'll get them into the record and I'll be on the same page.
So I've got, uh, a couple copies.
Show yours here.
Okay, got it. There you go, sir. Actually, I have an extra. So, um, John's initial comment was that, um, the, uh, let's see here. I don't have an extra. I'm sorry. Um, so John's initial, uh, comment was that the title of the plan, uh, should really not reference the original parcel. Um, I disagree with him, but it wasn't worth arguing about. So all I did was I add, added all of the lots that are affected by this re-subdivision instead of just listing the original parcel. Um, so, uh, it appears, it doesn't show up here again, so maybe he felt unsatisfactory. Um, so I changed both the title of the plan, um, and also the, uh, the narrative items and things like that that are affected by that. Um, let's see, applicant should clarify if the trees are existing or proposed. Um, those, the symbols on the plans are for proposed trees, and, uh, we've provided a legend on the overview plan or, uh, neighborhood plan. Uh, that indicates that those are proposed, which goes to his next comment, uh, or one of his next comments in that the trees should show up in the legend, which they do now. I'm not sure what comment he has, but when we get to it, I'll just reiterate it. Um, so, uh, John's first, you know what I'm realizing? His latest memorandum isn't in line with his original memorandum. They're the same discussion points, but they're in different orders for some reason.
That's okay. Just pick one and go with it and follow.
Why don't we start, I'm sorry to do this, but why don't we start with his latest memorandum? We'll just go through that. So before, uh, it says the board should, uh, consider requiring gradient drainage easements on lots one and two, uh, to be part of the right-of-way, and I feel that we've satisfactorily taken care of that because I extended the right-of-way as, uh, as we had discussed at the last meeting. So the board will recognize on the plans, there's this odd jog, for lack of a better term, in the right-of-way here, and there's an odd jog in the right-of-way here, and that's to satisfy John's grading comment. We do have, uh, two remaining easements because I wasn't going to take the road right-of-way and go all the way around that. That doesn't seem prudent, um, but we still have one gradient drainage easement. But the grading that's around the roadway is now going to be all within the right-of-way, and additional drainage items are covered by it. So, uh, I guess I'm submitting to the board that, uh, John's technical memorandum, number one for tonight, is addressed. Um, the applicant should clarify that the trees that are existing are proposed. I discussed that, uh, are proposed, and they show up in the legend as proposed. Uh, the applicant has labeled, uh, the road right-of-way. We, we labeled the road right-of-way with a tax map and lot number, and that has to do with, uh, for two reasons. One, we'd like to show the area of that because at some point, somebody's going to have to write a deed to the town, and that area should be listed in that deed. Additionally, by listing that area, one could add up all of these areas and make sure that it's the same area that I'm showing as part of the total lot area. And then, two, his point is that I've given it a tax map and lot number, and that has to do with assessment, so that, um, until such time as the road is transferred, that area can actually be assessed, uh, to the association. Uh, we had discussed that with your assessing department during prior application, and I think they felt that was acceptable to do. It's not done in many towns for some reason, and then you have this hanging piece of property that's unassessable, um, and then the lot area is not listed, so when it's transferred, people really don't know what size it is, which is, in my mind, inappropriate. I have a three-year-old, so I get all the fun things from school.
Not here yet.
Numbers four, five, and six, those, uh, would remain as conditions because all, uh, four and five, you know, four A and five, it should remain as conditions of approval because, um, until the plan is finalized and certified, it should always have stamps and signatures on it, so, uh, we would supply that as part of the final package. Number six, the applicant should meet with the assessor to ensure that our designations of lot numbers is appropriate. I'm happy to do that as part of a condition of approval. Certificate of , uh, loan limitation, the board should require that the applicant provide a certificate of guarantee, guaranteeing placement of the loans. I'm happy to do that as part of a condition of approval, um, except that, um, we, um, standard basis, don't set the road points until after road construction because they're just going to get wiped out. Um, and so in that instance, what we do is, you also require a bond for the roadway, um, prior to any, uh, building permits, so we would bond that as part of the construction, you know, but we would be happy to set the rest of it for you. So that would be a, uh, condition of approval also. Uh, number eight, the board and the applicant should discuss combining driveways. Uh, we discussed that last meeting, and we combined, Mr. Krebs, so that, uh, has been taken care of. Sheet number five and others, the applicant has provided a painting for a white stripe bar. Um, we discussed removing it, and we removed it from the plan, so it's, uh, not an issue. The detail that showed the natural gas, um, has been removed from the plan set. Uh, number, sheet number sixteen, the tree and shrub schedule should be added to the plans. Um, and the tree and shrub schedule is added to the, uh, master legend within the plan, so I don't, not think they've done it.
So it's added to the legend, but is there a schedule, for example, before the roadway is fully constructed, you know, the, the tree line, you know, between the butter will be planted, or, you know, some kind of timeframe relative to construction?
Oh, that use of the word schedule.
Yeah.
No, there is not.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to add one.
All right.
Yeah. When somebody says a planting schedule to me, that is a schedule of the plants.
That is a, that is a fair use of the word.
But not a timeline. Ah. Um, so, yes, I'd be happy to add that. Um, is it fair to say prior to the first certificate of occupancy, is that acceptable, acceptable to the board?
I'm going to think that our butter is probably going to want trees prior to.
That's kind of where I'm feeling. Um, you know, after completion of the road, where there would be as limited disruption to the sides where the planting would go on, I, I don't, I don't think it's necessary to plant until before you begin road, you know, underlayment or, or top coat, you know, maybe not finished surface paving, but.
Is there a fence there now, the, the butter, on the, most of the roadway?
There's a proposed fence.
Okay. Um, any idea, Lee, is that going to go in?
Typically.
In conjunction with the planting?
Yeah, typically you do them at the same time because they're so close to the level. So the entrance to this roadway has actually been started. So, um, they're built to about, about here, about four or five plus zero zero, about here. So, um, I'm not sure if it's paved or not. I don't believe it's.
No, it's not paved, but I see the defense machinery on it.
Yeah, I know.
But I'm just thinking, if you're talking about going for the first C O, that means there's already all the construction traffic that's going to be happening that the neighbors would have to tolerate, um, as opposed to once the road's in, if the trees went in, it would be that much more of a sound buffer and visual buffer, uh, for the other residents, while the, while construction goes on.
So there is still, uh, a tree line that's there now. We didn't, we didn't clear trees right to the, the tree line. So the only, the only complication that I see as far as prior to any building permit is that, um, if the weather breaks and, uh, they can get this paved this fall, then they would be looking for building permit. But the, it's a really, you know, this isn't the time of year that you would plant these types of plants. So that's, but you want to ensure that that takes place, and so that's why I'm saying prior to first certificate of occupancy.
You could separate the plantings from the fence, though, and install a fence and save plantings for spring.
You could do that, yeah.
I think that would be appreciated.
I think that would be appreciated.
Yeah.
So, uh, we would say, um, the fence, either prior to or as part of the building permit process, and then the, the, uh, plants as part of the certificate of occupancy.
Do you have any comments, John?
No. I, I like that better. In fairness to all, you know, Gagnon as well as Butters.
Um, and so prior to CO or, it would need to be bonded for, as part of the infrastructure that's unfinished.
Are you talking about the fence?
No.
What, I'm sorry, go back.
Because the fence, the fence, basically, you're saying you want that installed as prior to getting built.
As part of that building permit process, I think, you know, before construction really starts on the wall, yes.
So what I'm saying is, um, you would want it as either part of the CO, or to make sure that the vegetation does get built, that it's bonded for as part of the rest of the infrastructure that's not built.
When you say bonded for, you're talking about the road.
Right, but the trees are really.
Part of that same.
Part of that infrastructure. So, so if, um, let's just say this cul-de-sac isn't built. So we would bond the remainder of what's not built. So we come up with a value, call it a hundred thousand dollars, gravel, pavement, drainage. And then we would say, okay, so you have that, but you have this also that's unfinished, and that's worth ten thousand dollars. So your vegetation is part of your construction bond.
And so you're saying to potentially hold up the CO for that bond? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, you, you couldn't issue a CO without bonding the unfinished infrastructure.
Yes.
Right. The state law says build or bond, one of the two. So, I mean, maybe that's enough to just say.
Well, that's what's been going on on the road, and there, at this point in time, is there just a plan to, to pave a certain portion of the road or, or to finish a certain portion of the road?
Well.
I'm assuming it'd all be done, when they, when they have the paving crew come, they, they want to do the whole paving job. They want.
They'd like to. They'd like to, but they'd also.
Find a company, yeah.
They would also like to start construction on this house, and so it's all going to be weather-dependent. We're running out of time really fast this year. So if, right now, there's a gravel surface, if there's a paving company available, they're going to have somebody come in and pave just the first five hundred feet to base course. If the weather breaks and we have a nice weather like we've had this week, they'll likely come in and finish this cul-de-sac and pave it off once, but we don't know that. And so in that instance, that it's not finished, that's why we post a bond. So there's financial security there that it will be finished.
Okay.
So planting is part of CO or bonded for?
Continue, if you would. No, go, so go, I, I'll jump there for you. Um, approval from the fire chief and the police chief.
Okay, if the board wants that as part of a condition of approval, I'm okay with that loosely, but we already had their approval on the first visit.
The road, right. So, so.
This hasn't changed, so, uh, my initial response was, I, I'm sorry to be so flit, but John, why are you bringing this up? I mean, it's the same.
I, I'm curious about that too, and I want to hear from the other board members because I agree with you, the road is built, but if there's, you know, so the roadway's shorter, you know, you did change the road in that the cul-de-sac, you know, the whole, you know, you didn't change the dimensions of the cul-de-sac, so, you know, but since he's mentioning it, and he's our hired professional, I want to honor that with at least a discussion.
Well, the, in the preliminary plans that went through, um, you had feedback from the police and the fire at that point.
Yeah, yeah.
And.
They weren't preliminary, but they were.
They were full.
They were approved.
So is there any changes specifically to, anything to change to the road that these, this equipment would come down that has changed?
No, in fact, it's shorter and that section.
But no, no width has changed?
Zero. I mean, I was very sure.
No, none of the construction standards have changed?
Not, not one bit, right.
So it's basically the same road, regardless of what's happening around the road in cul-de-sac, it's the same road in cul-de-sac that they previously viewed and accepted.
Yes. We took this cul-de-sac, and it was here, and we went like this, and that's it.
It did, it, it did have a kick to it. You pulled it back, made it shorter, and changed some of the angle.
I mean, in fact, in fact, we took, there was a bend in it.
And it came back up.
Yeah, and it came back up. I mean, we took, kind of took that out of it.
My position is it's made it easier, from what they've already viewed and they accepted in prior plan, this is a, an easier plan, you know, way for them to navigate, but that's just, that's just one point of opinion.
I don't, I don't think it's necessary. I, I don't, I don't think this is substantial enough change that you would need to go and get their approval.
They are okay with that?
So final approval from the town engineer, I think we have that, so we can scratch that off the list. NHDS final approval. I'm going to be honest, I'm not sure that this actually needs subdivision approval, so I'll ask the question and make sure, forward the correspondence to YouTube. Um, so you, you can leave that as a condition of approval now, and then if it's deemed unnecessary by DES, I'll forward the correspondence.
Copy, John, if you would.
Yeah, absolutely. And then I'm not sure what fees need to be paid. We'd be happy to pay them. Uh, Jay isn't sent me a bill, so that might be what you're discussing.
Unless there's anything else. We'd have to check, so we're going to, you know.
This is so interesting. You don't need to record the plans.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, you would do.
You just do the recording for us.
So he's up to date on all his review plan?
The rest, yes.
Okay, so there's a fifty dollar check to a tat, to the town, plus a blank check to the registry, um, for.
So you record it?
Recording. No, we record now.
Okay.
That's new.
That's new.
Is there a specific reason that that's new?
We were finding some people who would take approved plans and not record them.
Then they don't have a valid project?
Well, right, nonetheless, you know, nonetheless, it creates problems. So this way, um, we know they're getting recorded because we're doing it.
Okay. And they're recorded timely?
Absolutely, same week, yes.
Great, thank you. So other than that, um.
Board, are there any concerns, questions?
I don't know.
Okay, this is good.
How are you? Are you doing okay with this? Do you want to, do you want a minute? I don't want to rush you.
I have a question. So we talked about the planting being in contingency of a CO or bonded.
Bonded.
Or bonded.
Or bonded.
With the roadway. The roadway's going to get bonded, and that will be.
Or bonded or roadway?
Where do you, needs to be built, needs to be bonded.
Built or bonded, okay. As a condition of CO.
Okay.
As a construct, as a condition of building permit, as the fence.
Okay.
So not to belabor the point, but plantings will go on the, I call the inside of the fence, so not both sides of the fence.
Right.
Okay.
I do just want to point out, Butters aren't here to. We've done a lot of work over the city lots to make sure that they are as happy as possible.
We do appreciate that.
Yes, we do. We do appreciate that. Okay, so with that, I'll reopen the public hearing in case any public want to comment. Um, okay, closing the public hearing, thank you anyway. Okay.
I'd like to hear how the list of what the potential.
Do you want to go, go to this? Let's have a list from Sarah, so we make sure we got any, yeah, records.
Okay. Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, 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 let me just try to put them together here. So it would be stamp final plans. By Kenneth, isn't your name Chris? Okay. And by Cindy.
Assessors.
Meet with the assessor, certificate of monumentation with the conditions that we bond the road and set the rest of the monuments. So you're not going to monument the road.
Until when? Can you clarify that?
The road. Once the road's built, set margins.
Okay, so that would be like a condition of taking, a condition of taking away the road then? Like, I just, you know, I want to, you know, timeline or.
So, well, here's the, I'll lay the timeline out for you. My advocate at some point is going to have to write you a check, and he's going to want his money back. So that's, that's the reason people finish projects now. And he can't have his money back until all the pounds are set and the grass is green on the side of the road.
Are you good?
Yeah.
Okay, continue.
So this. Are we at, the condition of the. So the building of the fence is it as a condition of the issuance of a building permit? And the planting of proposed trees and shrubs as a condition of certificate of occupancy or of built or bonded road?
Or bonded.
Built road or bonded road?
So, so the plantings will happen as a condition of occupancy or else they will be bonded? Because the road and the plantings go together. The road and plantings will be completed or bonded for as a condition of occupancy permit?
So no CEO will be issued unless the road is in place or unless the town is presented with a bond referencing the covering power.
Right, but add plantings to road.
Add plantings to road.
Yeah, they're all one.
Okay. And you said you added a tree and shrub planting schedule? Or you added the legend?
Okay, you added the legend, but I think the schedule, my definition of schedule has been addressed.
But it's been satisfied.
It's been satisfied, so I think we got it together.
So cost estimates for road and all improvements landscaping?
Yeah, so what we do is we prepare an estimate, we submit it to Jay for his review and approval.
Okay.
And then he approves it.
So that's a, that's a condition. And then, do you want to add as a condition state subdivision approval or?
Some kind of documentation from the state that it is either satisfied or not required?
Yeah, okay.
It'll be an email from the Rock Target for a dollar, if you're okay.
Okay. And then I'm going to also include payment of all fees just because.
We got to make sure Jay gets paid.
Yes.
Jay is paid now with the.
We have a recording phase. Yes.
So there'd be eight, it's like.
And we're past fire and.
Yeah, we, yeah, we're going to make it, yeah. Motion, anyone?
I'll second it.
The motion to approve the plans as presented with the conditions as stated.
The eight conditions.
The eight conditions as stated. Let us wait for our colleague to return for his voice.
There's, there's multifamilies in here on the original plan.
Yes.
So I can imagine changing to single families also is well received by the neighbors as well.
Yeah.
The project was not entirely well received, even though it was a, you know, a betterment, you know. Some would say they're just upset about the project still. So we reminded them that it has an approval already. So, John, we have a motion on the floor that's been submitted to approve the plans as presented with the eight conditions as discussed. Would you like to hear the conditions or?
I trust the board.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Fine, all right. You're good. Thank you. Have a good night.
These are going to go in the trash? Don't leave them or?
If you could recycle them, that would be.
If you, if you want to leave them, I will make sure they get recycled. You don't need to travel with recycling.
They'll always still be in the, in the, so.
That's fine. I'll take your breath. Thank you.
Okay. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, Board. I'm hoping that you all had a chance to look over the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any comments or questions? Did people have a chance to review them?
I'm going to force me because I have some here.
Yes, secure enough.
I did look, but I didn't have any comments.
Okay, my consensus will approve them then. Correspondence, I hope that we don't, we do not have any. Other business, we need to set the January date since the first Tuesday is the first. So I'm proposing that we meet on the eighth, if that works for people. We need to also consider that that would be a good time to hold a public hearing on all of our proposed zoning amendments. So we can do that at the same time, or we can hold a separate meeting as the board desires.
I'd be up for it.
I think that's efficient.
Yep.
Okay, does the eighth work for everyone? Okay, then the eighth, seven, thank you. And we'll do the hearings at the same time, same time. I'm hoping you all had a chance to see John's. His drafts. Likewise, I sent a write-up about accessory dwelling unit changes. So if you all want to take the moment to review them in case you haven't had a chance to, it would probably be a good idea to have language and such approved tonight so that we are uniform in what our planning of public hearing is, is about specifically when we get to that. I have a copy of the zoning ordinance if anybody wants to consult it to see that it correlates. Yep. I would, I would suggest that where it says Board of Selectmen, we change it to Select Board or their Designate, just because they like to be called that now.
Good.
If that's all right with everybody. Could you look at last month's meeting because I think we're missing something? Because we've got three items here and I think there was a fourth.
We did talk about. Impact fees versus.
Oh, right, we're going to table that. Yeah, so we'll get to that.
Yeah.
So, all right, well, while we are reviewing this, I got an email from, John forwarded to me the contact information for Bruce Mayberry, who is happy to come evaluate our situation and discuss what may or may have changed in Rollinsburg since 2011 and whether or not it is prudent to change our regulations such that, talk about impact fees, whether or not it makes sense and so forth. There's a fee for that.
Was it some time ago that we had someone, is it the same individual that?
Yes.
Talked about it and the, the ongoing administrative concerns and.
I wasn't there at that time, but that is my understanding that it was the same.
It was the same firm, same company?
Same gentleman.
And what's the fee?
He charges $125 an hour. He estimates it to be approximately $500 to come out and spend an hour and a half or two hours with us. So it's.
I, I don't, I don't think that. I mean, we've had a discussion about the past and the, of all impact fees, and we created one in a town that's bustling with development, but there are things that are popping up, we see. Do we feel we have to, we have to get on with the impact fees?
Not at all. So the thing about impact fees, to my mind, there are two things to consider with impact fees. One is that there's an administrative labor aspect to that, which, you know, we may or may not be able to deal with in the future depending on, you know, how things progress with the budget and so forth. The other is, you have to prove that these developments are causing an impact for which there is a cost.
Absolutely, yeah.
And right now, our school is not at capacity. So there's room there. So not to say that there is enough room for a 200-house development. So at what point do we want to get concerned? Because a 200-house development might, you know, bring it to the, bring it to worthwhile. It's not as though a 200-home development is out of the range of possibilities with the sizes of the parcels that could go up for sale at some point. So, you know, it's all about the way things are going now, I would say we're fine. We just don't know when that's going to happen.
No, and you're, you're right, you have to justify charging these fees if you don't exactly where the money is going in. And there is a need that has been created because of the additional burden of the population.
As it stands right now, to charge a certain amount of money and then return it to people with interest, you know, is, is an administrative drain that doesn't seem worthwhile. But, but there might be a point at which.
And there might be, yes. And, and we might get caught with our pants down for lack of a term if, if one of these big parcels that can be subdivided comes up for sale and sells and is purchased by developer. Do we want to get ahead of it, I guess is the question.
Well, I guess my question is, is there a way to get ahead of it without overburdening ourselves unnecessarily?
Is there someone from Stratford Regional Planning that could also?
That's an alternative.
But that means, that would be costly either.
The town has a membership with Stratford Regional, and for that membership, we could have them come out at least once a year and do a training on maybe one specific topic or else a general overview of topics, however we want to structure it. But yes, we can have them do that. And, and that might be a good idea too, because it's, it's an agency with a different perspective than somebody we've already heard from.
But I, even at this point, I don't feel myself as being educated enough in how they all work to really make an decision on should we.
I'm with you on that.
You know, I'd like to know more about it, you know, from someone who knows about it, but no bias in any direction. That's, that's where I sit.
No, I completely agree with that.
So are we on board with the idea of scrapping a change in impact fees for this voting cycle, for this election cycle? And then.
I don't think we're anywhere prepared.
We wouldn't have time, I think, to have someone speak, given that this is December.
Okay, so would you like me to reach out to Stratford Regional and inquire about getting them, or some kind of training? If so, is impact fees what we want to focus on, or do we want to prioritize something else?
We touched on a few different times, and I think we need to, I think we need to address it and decide whether or not we'll.
Can, can, so we've talked about growth, we're not, the impact fees, like, wrap that.
We could, we could maybe package that. I think that's a great idea. Okay, does that sound workable? The growth ordinance was the other one. That, that's what I was thinking. Okay, so we're going to, we're going to scrap the idea of a growth ordinance or a growth aspect to our zoning ordinance and tie it all together with impact fees. As training first, we'll revisit it next year. Does that sound like a plan? So we're down to three proposed zoning ordinances as per John's sheet that he provided. Getting our accessory dwelling unit language congruent with state law. The special exception about six or more units in a, in a building and adding or designate to the Select Board. Does anybody have any comments about John's language for number two, the special exception? Let's do this one at a time. Is there any discussion or question about?
This is a single change, it's changing it from the current wording here to this new wording.
Right, to all that language, which has implications. You know, he's adding an intent to some degree, with, you know, with that language.
Right, and what kind of comes to my mind is the year 2019, because that's, you know, when I think of the old mill, you know, the Blue Building, and that was certainly created in 2019, but. I mean, that just meets that, you know, someone built the four unit last year and they want to chop it, I think, even smaller and make it a six unit now. Or more.
Well, we'd have to meet a space requirement.
Yeah, they would have to meet a space requirement. But I, I see this more as something pertaining to some of the, I'm not going to say original, but some of the older. I guess you really can't do that.
Well, I'm wondering if that whole sentence is even pertinent, because I don't think it, I don't think there are any buildings in town for which that would apply. With the exception of the mill, I suppose, is why he's allowing that to be there. Because you have to allow the mill that potential since it's zoned as a mixed use mill.
Because it is now, yes.
But to my mind, those are the only buildings for which this can speak to, because any other building is probably maxed out at capacity.
Within its safe, within its footprint, yes.
Right.
Right, which, which opens it up to other scrutiny. Well, in that safe, in that case, it's just a safe for 2019, because it really doesn't matter, because it's really limited now. Buildings are really qualified for this, that have the mass and the, you know, the space. Yeah, I'm okay with that. It just, yeah, that weeds mine to be.
So what is the real change here? So existing says the lanes containing multiple dwelling units shall contain no more than six.
Period.
Period, yeah. And now we're saying new buildings contain no more than six. Buildings that were constructed prior to 2019 should be allowed to be converted into multiple units. New restrictions provided they.
Without restrictions, no. We removed the restrictions, but still, it doesn't mean everything else.
Yep.
Is existing. So that means you would already have the parking there.
Yep.
You could have two spaces for a unit, I think now it is.
I'm not sure that that's even the problem that needs to get addressed as far as, you know, the intent in changing the language is because when Bluen went through his process, he was allowed in one area of the zoning and then he met, he ran up against a wall with the other. he was allowed in one area of the zoning and then he met, he ran up against a wall with the other.
Not a wall, but density, wasn't it? Because six is six, period.
But I don't think the problem was with eight, one, two, 10, because, because there's nothing wrong with saying buildings containing multiple dwelling units shall contain no more than six dwelling units per building.
It does, because he has more than six in that building.
Yeah, that was his problem.
That was his problem.
It was limited to six.
So then we do have a problem with 2019, because he remains, but maybe it has to remain that way, because he got approval prior to. I'm not sure, I'm not sure about whether that language serves the interest with containing the date. And not to say that it doesn't.
What, my question would be, why is he, why is he separating new buildings from existing? Why not just, I mean.
I have that same question.
It's gonna be restricted based on size.
I agree, and I.
Yeah, but you, you kind of, by putting 2019, you sort of establish a grandfather effect before or after 2019, when your building was built.
Right, and that makes Blue and still non-compliant.
No, because the, the building itself was constructed before 2019.
Right, so any building that's in town now.
He's just modifying.
It's sort of a safety to someone coming out of something a little wild downstream.
Yeah, like making apartment building, like a new apartment.
Right. Right, something that's fits now, but.
Yeah, and he's saying that, okay, with the parking spaces, okay.
Because that's a mixed-use building with a commercial and residential. I think he's safely recorded now that it's about 2019, only because of what exists now limits it in itself.
Thoughts?
I think we agree.
Okay, so we're good with that. Any comments on number three, changing select board of selectmen to select board or their designee? That's pretty straightforward. And then skipping back up to going out of order here, number one, I provide that on a separate sheet. It's referenced in a few different places. This printout from the municipal association offers guidance on why I propose the changes that I proposed. Do you have another? Yeah, there's one over there if you want to. No, not that, the.
What you checked out.
Yeah, I think it's, it's in there. Yeah, thank you. Just so you can see what we're looking at. So I'm putting in bold my recommendation. So under the table of uses, which is 6.9A, under table of uses is residential. And the first item under residential is accessory dwelling unit. So under that table, I believe we need to add a P saying that it is permitted in the industrial district, because we allow for single-family dwellings in the industrial district. You must allow ADUs in the same districts that you allow single-family dwellings.
Because E is an exception on that track, right? So P would be permitted. E is an exception.
S E, special exception.
Special exception. That's not the case anymore, because of the way the state changed. So now we would have to have a P, correct?
We have to have a P, I believe, yes. Okay, so under eight, one, multiple dwellings, two-family dwellings, accessory dwellings, and renting of rooms, number three under that is accessory dwelling units. The reference, it references the table seven, which is the residential permitted uses. And it's really 6.9, as I noted above, not seven. So we need to change the reference there in the text to 6.9 rather than seven. Under that, number four, I believe we should delete, it limits the number of bedrooms to one. We are not allowed to limit the number of bedrooms. So I think we ought to just delete that number altogether and renumber.
Well, we have the safety of the square footage required.
Exactly.
So that's what, that's what it limits on, and it's only.
In and of itself, right.
In and of itself, yes.
Yes, okay. And then number 12, under that same section, maximum size is currently 500 square feet in our regs. We must allow a minimum of 750 square feet. So we could change the maximum size to 750 square feet. So it becomes the maximum and the minimum at the same time. Which is bizarre, and I, you know.
Have to be 750 square feet?
That is the minimum. So we can allow for larger than that, but given that.
We can set our maximum.
We can set our maximum.
They set our minimum.
We have to allow that minimum.
Right, so we kind of cap it, basically it has to be 750, because that's the state minimum in Rawlinsburg maximum. So you, you're capped.
If you're gonna have it, it will be 750 square feet.
What is that?
I'm not even sure what to say.
But the building itself may not allow that certain square footage without.
If you leave a four, I don't set the alarm.
Okay, very good.
I'll do the same.
Thank you, sir.
Right, by pigeon-poming that exact dimension.
That's really specific.
Just because.
And it's, yes, and that will be problematic.
That's what I mean. I mean, you could say 750 to 850, just to give them a little wiggle room, but.
Something.
You would have, you know, you would have to frame this to be just 750.
Well, and we have to allow a minimum of 750, but I'm not sure, does that mean we cannot approve something that's proposed to be 600?
It's a state, it's a state minimum. I think that.
So.
The minimum is 750. If it's not 750, it doesn't qualify. It's not a minimum.
Do you see on there?
You may not limit the ADU to less than 750 square feet.
We may not limit it to less, but we could allow it to be less. So I think that allows us to have a maximum of 750.
Okay.
And then somebody could propose and we could approve something less than that, but we cannot dictate that it will be less than that.
I think the maximum is a good idea. We don't call it a 2000 square foot.
Idiot, right.
Right?
Two thousand to seven, are we not limited?
Right, so we're not limiting, we're not requiring, but we could allow.
We could allow, okay. So they could build 600. We could allow it.
We just cannot impose that minimum.
Okay. Must allow a minimum.
So we can change the language.
Say we allow a minimum.
We can expand upon the language in number 12 to, you know, we will, we will allow ADUs to be up to 750 square feet, you know, something to that effect.
This is probably safe.
Do you want a minimum of?
I would say no, because we don't want to restrict people to having to build something 750. We would want to allow somebody, I would think, to build something at five or 600 if they want to.
Yep. Right, as long as it services all of the requirements of, in TV. I mean, you have to have, in facilities, you have to have. That kind of stuff is not real big.
No.
That's, that's inefficient with that.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, they're saying it right here. A minimum is unnecessary, but maximum is a good idea so that someone isn't at 5,000 square feet ADU.
Right.
Just make sure your maximum size is at least 750. Just make sure. And we would, we would have that, that would be our maximum.
So the current language says the size of the accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed 500 square feet. I would just say that we change 500 to 750.
Perfect.
Okay. And then under 18 of that same section, it says accessory dwellings shall be allowed in a detached accessory structure that is in existence prior to the adoption of this ordinance, provide the following conditions are found to exist. Number, letter A, under that, the existing detached accessory structure consists of at least 500 square feet of floor space. So again, I would just swap out 500 for 750.
Yep.
Talking about existing structures rather than building a structure. But the same condition, the same allowance would pertain.
So this is, this reads to me as though it's a minimum. The existing detached accessory structure consists of at least 500? And we would substitute 500 for 750? Am I reading that?
Just keeping in line with our attached.
So you're right, okay. So the existing detached accessory structure consists of no more than? We'll, we'll change that to?
Well, no, because if you've got a structure that's 750, how are you gonna chop an ADU out of it? This is like the. Otherwise, you're turning this, let's say someone has a 750-square-foot garage.
This is for detached.
That's what I'm saying, a detached garage.
So it is an interesting conundrum, is you've got an existing structure.
Because otherwise, now you're turning this garage into just another unit. It's not really.
You've got a 200-square-foot mudroom with no, like, unfinished mudroom, you know.
I would think that the detached structure has to be big enough to support the ADU as well as the structure itself, the use, the original use of the structure. Otherwise, you're changing the use of the building.
So do we say, you know, at least 500, but no more than 750 square feet and give them a range?
But I'm talking about, if you're gonna have the, the ADU, the accessory dwelling unit
Yes.
inside of another structure, let's say a garage, just because it's easier. You got, I would think you don't have at least a 1,500-square-foot garage, so you can still have a garage and put an ADU above it, because otherwise, if it's 800, you've really changed the use of that structure since.
Entirely, yes, but I think that's the intent. I think that's the intent, that you no longer have a garage, or you don't necessarily still have a garage.
But.
You just have an ADU, yeah.
So how are you proposing them where it should be? That the, that this detached structure can only be a max? Because now you're forcing them to change it from a garage. If you say the maximum square footage of that structure is 750, now you're forcing them to change the use of that building here, because it's not very enough for a garage.
Well, okay, so the existing detached accessory structure consists of at least 500 square feet of floor plate, of floor space. That is not speaking to how much of it would be an ADU. That's the accessory structure itself. So, so how big do we want a structure itself to be before we say that we're gonna max you out at 750 square feet? Because we cannot prescribe a minimum less than 750 square feet, even though it's detached.
I'm thinking of, I don't know their name, but the barn on Sligo and Bear, where he put a mother-in-law inside the barn. Granted, the barn's great, it's a large structure and there's still ample square footage left over, but he did tuck in the ADU.
So do we want to say anything at all about how big the structure is?
I don't think you can, I don't think you can.
So he could, he could conceivably convert the entire barn into a.
Well, we're maxing you out at 750 square feet.
For the accessory unit.
But that may be your whole structure.
But it doesn't have to be your whole structure. You should still have a functional structure.
Yeah, I don't think we care what.
I don't think we can care. Granted, it has to be these 750 to support the ADU.
Right.
But if you want to have a garage that you have upstairs and you want to put an ADU up there and still have your garage.
So I, so.
I don't think we can cap the existing structure's space, as long as the existing structure, whether, whether the ADU takes up every bit of that square footage or a quarter of it.
So is A necessary at all? Is this, is that, is that sentence necessary at all? Would it be better to scrap this?
So this, this is saying, I think I understand it, that's better known, that the building, your detached building has to be at least 500 square feet before you can attempt to put an ADU in. At least 500 square feet.
And I'm saying.
Which is not unreasonable.
Correct, if you have a shed that's 200 square feet, you're not gonna convert that to an accessory dwelling.
No, because you, in, in, the flip side is you change, you no longer have the shed. Now, you've changed the use of that building altogether.
Right.
But are we gonna require that they still have a shed or a garage or a barn? Or can it all be for this purpose?
I don't have that answer for you. Because I have a garage that has space above that I could certainly put that in and still have full use of my garage. But my neighbor has a very tiny garage and 750 might be his whole garage.
But if you don't want a garage, then do we want to dictate to you that if you're?
I don't think you can dictate, you know, what my building has to or can't be, as long as I can fit the 750 in there. The rest of it is still my building to use as I wish. So the, so I don't think we can put a limit on.
Why do you think they use the term floor space? You know, and they.
That, that is.
In the prior, I mean, I almost think floor space means, you know, living area for the ADU.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I think there's a reason why there's a differentiation between the phrase.
Floor space and what, you know, what's the alternative if it's not?
Floor space.
As opposed to?
The other one doesn't say anything at all, the prior one, the, the.
It doesn't say floor space, huh? I see it here on the 18.
I don't think there's any other reference.
No, because in most other cases, you're putting it inside of a home anyways, a house anyways. This is only for a detached, so it would have to be an outbuilding. Because if it's attached, it's part of your main structure, it's part of your main house.
What I want to say, Kevin, is why are they adding of floor space? Why would they just stop it and feed if it wasn't? I mean, I'm just thinking it means, you know, the livable area of the ADU versus the, the rest of the structure.
Well, because you've got, you've got GL, a gross living area in a house. But in a garage, you don't have any gross living area, it's just floor space. It's not, it's not heated, it's not living space.
Until you convert it.
So you can't say square feet of living area, because it's not living area unless you transition it. You have a good point, that, that sticks out, why is that?
Why is that?
There than nowhere else. But because you're talking detached dwelling, detached building, it can't, it can't be living space, because you'd have two different houses on one lawn.
Potentially, yes. And so that's my question is, you know, ADUs according to our regulations have to be attached. So I'm, do we even have to allow them in an accessory structure?
I, I think we run into problems if we try to take out that ability for a detached. Although it does, I did read something in here about the detached.
So ADU must be attached? Is it considered untouched ADU?
A municipality is not required to allow detached ADUs. For example, a unit that is above a detached garage or is a standalone building. If it does allow them, they are subject to other provisions of the lot, except that an increased lot size may be required. So we can make them change the minimum acreage to allow for that. But we do not have to allow 18 at all.
So, so we, 18 currently exists, right?
Yes.
And it's at least 500 feet of floor space.
18 pertains to.
Yes.
So we're thinking that we would want to change it to be a maximum of 750 square feet of ADUs?
Well, we have to allow that as a minimum. Right now, we are allowing them with a minimum of 500. We could continue to allow and add the maximum of 750 and be done with it. Or we can get rid of A, or, you know, just, I mean, we have allowed 18. 18's in there. We can get rid of 18, we don't have to have it. I'm not sure that.
Maybe we could strike A.
I think we can strike A.
But I don't, yeah, I don't necessarily want to start seeing, you know, a bunch of sheds turned into, you know, living space. That's, that's.
Tiny houses.
Yeah, that's really not.
Tiny houses.
But is, did they create this law because of the tiny housing?
So this predates tiny houses, I'm sure. This is probably older.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure.
The houses, because it's tiny.
It's conceivable that you could build a 300-square-foot tiny house and, on next to a.
With no digital.
Now you're talking building, this building, this isn't, this is different than a existing detached structure that you're looking at modifying.
Right, because if you want an ADU, it's attached to your house. This is an existing structure, so you're not gonna build a tiny house.
Existing detached structure, so I think we're safe there. And a new permit for a tiny house is gonna have to go before a select board. That's a whole different, right? That's a whole different thing, so I think striking A, and that takes care of the concern about floor space, whether or not it's floor space, and it still has to fit everything else in the guidelines, which means the 750 that we talked about. Yeah, leaving B, because you don't want to change the footprint, you want to try to make, let the building remain the same. And, you know, that it's not a total re-revamp of the building. C would be just, you know, minimal, minimal modifications to, you know, cheap rock insulation, you know, wiring and plumbing.
Well, let us just note, under 18, the final sentence, that those structures are exempt from eight, nine, and 13, which are not insignificant.
Well, and realistically, a point I brought up before, it also really should be exempt from town number 10, because you can't have a, you know, a doorway between two buildings that are not.
Right, like, it's. Right, like it's, it's, yes, exactly. By nature of being 18, it does not comply with 10.
It can't be a direct access, right?
So we should at the very least add 10. So are we striking A or are we adding 10?
Striking A and adding 10, both of them.
What is 10?
So 10 is, the accessory dwelling shall have convenient and direct access to the primary dwelling unit, a connecting inside door, and its own separate entrance and exit. So it will not be connected with a door because it's a separate.
So we add 10 to strike A. I'd be for that.
Okay, is there any way that this could be misconstrued such that?
Not so much because it does say you can't really modify the, you can't really change, you know, the footprint of the building. And it's only minimum modifications to make it happen. You can't totally revamp a, a structure to, to make this happen. It's for, it's for, you know, notching a little, you know, in-law in your garage, above your garage or in your barn.
Okay.
And it still has to fit everything else for ADUs.
John, are you in favor of deleting A and adding 10?
I think so. Sorry, I'm finding it a little bit confusing, but I think so.
Would you like some more time? I don't appreciate, like, I just want to feel out the board from where we're at.
I think that makes sense to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so are we okay with everything else on this page relating to changes in the zoning ordinance radius? Do you feel like you have this?
I would think you were gonna remind it.
Okay, I can do that. I can do that.
Just one question that kind of popped in my mind. When we talked about the wording, select board and their designee.
Yes.
Should it be designees? Does it always have to be the same person? They, they could.
Well, they can designate, they can designate anybody.
You and then not you and not you because you're on vacation.
Yeah, but that just becomes a different, they can designate a different person, I would say.
At any time to, for any project, okay.
So, yes, I think that's fine. I don't think any both of those, but that's a good question. I think it's fine.
Because the designate can change.
It's not a permanent recognition, it's not a permanent designation. Okay, as long as it's not limited to the same person because maybe that person doesn't want to go.
Well, not only that, but like you could designate me to do one job and Caroline to another.
In which case you both designate.
Yeah, we're both, yeah.
You designate and they're designees.
Could it hurt to put designate?
In parentheses with the S, the S in parentheses, okay.
Someone can point out to my face.
You made a mess of yourself.
Kevin really is back into town, leaving your mark.
I get a footnote because I, E, K, I, N, E, S.
Absolutely. Okay, very good.
The only thing I'm thinking about, and I'm sorry to go back to this.
You're fine.
In terms of detached.
Yep.
So the new law really doesn't address detached.
No, it does not. Because we don't have to allow them, we do allow them, we don't have to.
Okay, so why is it that if the new law doesn't address them, why do we have to change the minimum to 750 square feet?
We, we're gonna scratch A, so there will be no minimum. It will only reference 12, which will be changed, 12, which says the size shall be, which shall not exceed. That will be changed to 750. And that will apply also to the accessory structure that has an ADU in it. So we're gonna scrap A because there will be no reference to any minimum.
Okay, so the only possible impact of this change in regard to that is that if we have an existing detached accessory unit that's 500 feet, they could enlarge it.
They can't change the footprint.
You can't change the footprint, that's B. No net increase in building footprint or floor space shall be allowed.
Can't add floor space, yeah. That's kind of the caveat, I think, that, you know, you can't modify the building to, to an ADU in there. It has to fit.
Right, in the building.
In the, within the building.
Okay.
And that ADU still has to be inside of private, so you can't talk a real tiny one in there. But we still have to fit ADU, right? Whether it's attached or detached.
Okay.
I like it.
Okay, then we shall present it on January 8th. Are there any other questions, topics, concerns before we adjourn? Pause it here.
All right.
Happy Tuesday, everyone.